Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting on the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, January sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature and teams to be automatically placed in queue. And trustees, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Tonight, we have guests online, and I would like to acknowledge the presence of Mr. Josh Fulan and his team from Maximum City, who are M Y S P consultants. Mr. Fulan will speak to the M Y S P later in the evening. Welcome, Mr. Fulan. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father, and National Anthem. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawangarang.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's our honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged thanks.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nations.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee McGuire, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father, and National Anthem?
Thank you, and through your chair. So tonight's prayer I found from the Bishop's Council of Ireland, and it's about exams, and this is a time for many students who are preparing for their exams. So we wish them good luck, and we hope that they are able to prepare. So in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Lord, I know that you are with me and love me. Give me peace of mind as I prepare for this time of study. Help me to focus on my books and notes. Keep me from all distractions so that I will make the best use of this time that is available to me. Give me insight that I might understand what I am studying and helping to help me to remember it when the time comes. Above all, I thank you for the ability to be able to study and for the many gifts and talents you have given me. Help me to always use them in such a way that they honor you and do justice to myself. And I ask you to join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Item one point two, motions arising from in-camera. There were no motions from the in-camera session that will require a vote in the public session. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Item number two. Trustees, do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Oh, sorry, additions or deletions to the agenda? And do trustees want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take out item six point one, point two, point two. The management of student behaviors posing imminent physical risk.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remove sections six, one, two, three, school uniforms.
Six point one, point two, point three, okay. Any other trustee who wants to have the consent agenda item changed? I would like to remove item six point two point four. Six point two point four, which is the correspondence. Oxstar letter, six point two point four, I'd like to remove that one. Any other changes? Trustee Carabella, your hand is still up there? Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Looking for removal, please. Trustee Carabella? Looking for a second, trustee Sanders. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Powell? In favor? Opposed. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Uhun Chenada?
In favor.
Waisho Ragnum?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Chua has joined online? No? Trustee Dipu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, three opposed. No abstention. Motion carries. The agenda is approved, is amended. We shall now move on to the next item, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one, senior staff update, renewed STEAM strategy. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that we're very proud of at our board is the work that we do to integrate all forms of curricula, and one thing that I think sets Holton Catholic apart is focus on STEAM. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, who is superintendent of program, and this would fall under his responsibilities, Superintendent Kroll, to make some introductions and to T S F. Thanks.
Sure. Good evening. Good evening, trustees. Happy to be here again with a friend and a friend that's someone that you've got to know a little bit over the last couple of years, our curriculum consultant for STEAM, Matt Kovacs. A little bit of background, so you would recall that the original STEAM strategy came out of a board motion in 2020. And part of the reason that Matt's been coming back is because part of that strategy was to make sure that we kept trustees updated about the STEAM strategy. The STEAM strategy ended sort of with the school year end in 2023. So what you're going to hear tonight in a very brief presentation represents the work that was done over the last three-plus years with the initial STEAM strategy, as well as the work that's been put into the revised STEAM strategy. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kovacs. Good evening, Matt, and he's going to sort of provide you with the updates.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll, and through you, Chair. Pleasure to be back with all of you tonight to share again some of the work in the groundwork that we've been doing in STEAM over the past number of years since the motion was approved in 2020. We worked out like a signal cue. It was either that or a smirk. So just at the beginning, just a quick recap, for those of you who are not fully familiar with the motion that was passed in 2020. And this is actually directly from that. When the committee was struck back in 2020, or actually twenty, I think it was 2019, and then came up with the work in 2020, there were a number of overarching philosophies that guided the original roadmap, which I will break down in the next slide. But some of those overarching philosophies is the idea that as the board, we move forward with the idea of STEAM education instead of STEM. So incorporating A, as in the arts, bringing in art philosophy, mindset, out-of-the-box thinkers, connecting STEAM education, of course, to the curriculum documents, which we've seen from the ministry over the past two years, has been very keen on incorporating STEM, both in strands and the front matter of many new documents. The O C S Gs, the Ontario Catholic Graduate or School Graduate Expectations, increasing connections to STEAM in all subjects, so not just STEAM subject or subjects, but also those not represented by the letters, and of course, increasing engagement in STEAM for all. Not going to go through word by word for each one of these, but again, this is a highlight from the original roadmap. So with this renewed strategy, we've just gone back to update a little bit of the language. But in this particular case, the language is more or less copied and pasted. So it describes the idea that the O C S Gs, combined with theological theme, they're a framework for holistic development of our students. The expectations of both align perfectly with STEAM education, especially as it relates to project-based or problem-based learning. STEAM emphasizes the idea that many subjects are actually interconnected and approach many of those global competencies or 21st century learning skills, as we call them. And then the example that discerning believers aligns with the scientific inquiry process and ethical considerations, which we always have to consider, especially in problem or problem and project-based learning that connect to communities. STEAM education aims to build community. So with our STEAM initiatives, we aim to build that idea that students should be active participants in their communities, both locally and globally. So that kind of idea that we're welcoming all students as children of God as well with the students we have in our schools. We're using STEAM to prepare our students for a future through dynamic and relevant learning experiences. We often call them real world because we try to simulate as many, in as many cases as possible, what they may see in the real world. And rooted and connected to our liturgical theme, STEAM calls us as Catholics to work collaboratively with each other, with our students, to create relevant experiences. So on this slide, actually, the original roadmap had approximately fourteen or fifteen goals. We're just highlighting some of the ones that we went back to update. The roadmap really was our guiding document when we started our work. And when I say our, I mean, the curriculum department, but as well as our STEAM team, myself, and four of our elementary itinerants. The roadmap, we really use as our document to guide our work into schools and our strategies. So these were plucked from the original motion, the original roadmap. So we're just like to quickly point out some of these, for example, equitable access to opportunities, dedicated project funding, including hiring of myself, the other itinerants for professional development, competitions, contests, guest speakers, which you've seen from STEAM over the past three years, cross-panel initiatives, interdisciplinary, which so far has existed as many of our STEAM programs in our high schools, dedicated maker spaces, an excellent partnership opportunity that we've had to work with facilities to create maker spaces in over twenty of our schools so far in the last three years, school-level leads, and offering STEAM A Qs or additional qualifications courses. So these were the original roadmap goals. And then on the next slide, we've gone back and done a little bit of updating based on some of the contexts that we've seen over the last three years to make it relevant, but also adapted a little bit more for Holton Catholic. So that idea for interdepartment collaboration that STEAM should be working across multiple areas, across the board, especially at the system level. So in the past three years, we've had many opportunities to collaborate with different departments, such as student success, special education, facilities. So STEAM has really brought a number of those departments together as that kind of collaborative force. I usually like to say there's a lot of letters in STEAM. Equitable representation in STEAM. So we actually split up the original roadmap goal, having to deal with equity, because we found that we needed to branch it off into two different ones. So that would be equitable representation in STEAM. So that idea that we are pursuing opportunities for our underserved or underrepresented communities or members in our community or students. But then also, we've started to see that we need to, especially because STEAM leverages so much of the new technology, we need to start to focus on creating equitable access. So we've actually worked with administrators over the past number of years to align and help streamline some of those purchases that have been done in schools, especially when it's related to maker spaces and supporting STEAM. We're going to continue to develop our post-secondary connections. So our STEAM interdisciplinary programs that we'll have at three schools as of next year, we're really hoping to continue some of those relationships with universities, colleges, trade schools, so McMaster, Mohawk, Sheridan, Conestoga, et cetera, et cetera. So we're hoping to continue developing those. Emerging technologies and innovation, this is a really one that we're excited about because it encapsulates officially our robotics, which we've been working over the last two years to really get back off the ground and make our board known for it. It also incorporates esports, which all of you have seen over the past few years, but also recognizes that we need to address the issue of artificial intelligence with our students and in our classrooms. So we're starting to incorporate a little bit of that idea that AI is an emerging technology and that we need to address it. Continuing professional development for staff, our itinerants and myself, we support K to twelve. A major part of our job is helping staff develop different assessment and pedagogy strategies. Our STEAM Champ program, which actually we had a session this evening at St. Kateri. Related to coding, we run five or six so far. We have about thirty in our program. And those are educators from across the system that we have been developing, honing in their skills so that they can take that back to their schools and build capacity. And last but not least, the A and T in STEAM. So this year, we've had the opportunity to finally take a refocus or focus back in on art. The release of the new science document in the last year or two from the ministry had us focused very much on STEM, but we are seeing and having the opportunity now that we have some momentum to bring back that art. So we will be running an art and technology showcase at the end of May at St. Francis Xavier. We have a committee that's already started to kind of pull those different areas of art and technology together, as well as looking at different mediums such as video game design, production, video communications, and students communicating their ideas. And I think that summarizes it. I know from the last time, there were lots of good questions, so we've left a good amount of time.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Thank you, Mr. Kovacs and Superintendent Kroll for the presentation. Don't ask for questions because trustees never stop asking questions. So you're going to get a lot of questions. Anyway, the floor is open now to trustees, and we have a speakers list. First up is trustee Saunders. You have the floor.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm just wondering, do you see the program expanding? And can you give us an idea of how many consultants and itinerants we have working in the program now?
And just Superintendent Kroll?
Specifically attached to the same strategy, we have one consultant who's sitting beside me, and we have four itinerants.
And do you see that expanding in the?
Do I see the positions expanding? I think we'd have to certainly see what the board budget would be before I would answer a question like that. Do we see programming expanding? I think what we've seen is that the five staff that are working have made an incredible impact in in growing STEAM opportunities across our system, developing three secondary programs over those four years, the number of opportunities for elementary students. So I certainly can see the impact that those staff have.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. You have a follow-up? Okay, if not, we'll move on to trustee Dipu. Trustee Dipu?
Thank you, Chair and through you. I love all the work that you're doing. I love STEAM personally, and I think it's great that you're updating the program based on like whatever's happening right now in reality. So for example, like AI, we definitely need our students to be educated about that. And also, I just needed some clarification about how exactly like you're planning to update your equity goal, and like you said equitable representation in STEAM. So do you have any ideas on how you're going to achieve that?
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, and I'll have Matt Kovacs enter this one. Through you, Chair. So the original roadmap goal for STEAM was to increase or address the lack of opportunities for underrepresented students. So in the past three years, we've looked at different opportunities such as girls who game. So we actually have two elementary schools at the moment who really focus in on bringing girls into a safe environment. Not without boys, they come in later, to try to kind of build some of that self-confidence. We've also had sessions and had communications with different programs. For example, there is a Venture Academy Black Initiative with McMaster University. Our equity consultant, actually, Amanda Gonzalez, she's coordinated a number of opportunities for students in that way. We actually have an upcoming as well Black Symposium that's taking place in Notre Dame, which we'll be partnering with them to do esports with a number of black students. And so some of the other things I can also speak to is that if we look at some of our STEAM interdisciplinary programs, and that would be at Notre Dame, St. Francis Xavier, and St. Ignatius of Loyola, one of the main selection criterias for those programs is equity-based criteria. So addressing the lack of representation in STEM fields from women, girls. So every time we come up with initiative and every opportunity that we see that we can pull in, we do that from an equity perspective, and we work across different departments, such as with our equity consultant, with special education, with our special education department. So whenever there's an opportunity, we try to reach out and bring that in.
Thank you. Trustee Dipu, follow?
No.
Okay, up next is trustee Powell. Trustee Powell, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Chair. This is really encouraging, and actually, that was a great question by student trustee Dipu. I was curious about that, too. Just a quick question about your challenges, not to be Debbie Downer here, but what would you say is the top, or what would you say is your biggest challenge with this program?
Mr. Kovacs?
Sure, and through you, Chair. So I think, you know, we've actually had a number of conversations. We regularly reflect on some of our challenges, especially as a STEAM. Sorry, I hesitate to say STEAM team. Everybody knows I'm not the fan of puns. But anyways, we do a lot of self-reflection. Superintendent Kroll and myself, we also do a lot of reflection. And some of the challenges that we've had, I would say the largest challenges so far have come from a ministry perspective in the idea that over the last number of years, we have had a number of new documents that we have had to roll up from a curriculum perspective, such as science, math, the new language, secondary, the tech mandatory requirement. And every time something like that's released, we have to adapt. So when you're in the middle of working on a strategy of supporting educators, that becomes very challenging. I would also say that, actually, back to perhaps the point as well from trustee Saunders, I think that perhaps if there were an opportunity in the future to expand perhaps some of our itinerant staffing, that is where we'd be able to address educators and support them the most. So I think as an ongoing challenge, which will never end from the ministry at the release of the documents, that is one. But increasing or looking at the possibility of increasing our STEAM itinerant staffing or staffing is another one we discussed.
If I can just add, one of the things that we've tried to do when we think about those challenges is, and I'll give you a good example. We've had O L V come and present here before about the STEAM program that they have there. It's really taken root, and it's been really successful. So what we asked those educators to do over the summer was basically to write a playbook for us. What did you do and how did you make it work? So that if an administrator is interested in trying an initiative, they can go to this group of experts and see how they actually implemented it. Those educators talk about how they overcame the problems that they had. So we're trying to find ways to meet people where they're at, whether they're already well on the way and they just need some support, or they don't know where to start. But with those that don't know where to start, we were taking those areas we've had a lot of success to be able to show that, look, you will have issues that you have to overcome, but here's how you can do that.
Thank you, trustee Powell. Follow? Thank you. Up next is trustee McGuire. You have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was really informative. I know that a lot of students throughout our schools really enjoy STEAM. On that note, I was really intrigued by the emphasis on art and technological. I think that's a really important part about STEAM rather than STEM. So I was just wondering how might we integrate this emphasis on arts and technology into our dedicated STEAM programming like at Loyola and Santa Fe X and all the other schools? Thank you.
Mr. Kovacs?
Sure, maybe I'll start by saying, and Matt mentioned earlier, but the ministry's providing challenges. They also do provide opportunities, and I think the mandatory tech credit that's coming in for high school students for next year will be one of those opportunities. We've always thought about STEAM for all, not STEAM for some, right? And that was part of the initial program, the sort of the initial strategy, the initial roadmap. That was a conversation that was always had with the initial steering committee, that these should be opportunities for all students, not just certain students. So having every student take a tech credit is another entryway for them, is another way to hook them in. But I'll turn it back over to the expert.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So there's a couple of media things that we are looking at to try to increase a lot of that representation in art. And one of the things I can actually speak to from Superintendent Kroll was the idea of looking at some of the courses, at least in high school situations, that lend themselves a little bit more to an art focus. So if we're looking at courses, for example, like the mandatory tech credit that will be coming in next year, if we look at courses like the technological design, which we do incorporate already as a part of our STEAM programs at all three high schools, that was one of our main methods of saying, well, through tech and design, students can learn the skills they need to do 3D design, but then that leads into 3D modeling, which could lead then into grade ten, eleven, twelve, which maybe leads into some, a little bit more arts programming and visual arts programming. Another thing we are exploring is, you know, recognizing that if, you know, in 2020, 2024, it's not 2023 anymore, that creator culture, modern culture, the way art has really transformed through the use of technology, back to that idea of artificial intelligence with technology. We are looking for ways, and actually, our itinerants have already started doing workshops, leveraging tools like we video with video editing in grades five to eight. Some of the themes for the upcoming first robotics competitions are literally called, well, they're called masterpiece, but they're arts-based. And that's in at least twenty to thirty of our schools that are registered for first robotics. So we're really trying to pull any type of art and technology connection in. We have a couple more things that we're actually working through at the moment in secondary with some of those STEAM programs as we're mapping out ten, eleven, twelve. But I will have an update likely to share with that at a later time.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. A follow-up question?
No, thank you. That was really exciting to hear those opportunities.
Thank you. I see no other hands up here, so I just have a comment here to Superintendent Kroll and Mr. Kovacs. I watched the plan, 2020 to 2023 roadmap, and it's great that we have taken initiative to update that plan. Okay, and this ensures an equitable, you know, distribution of utilization of the plan for all our students across the system and making education more accessible and really solving, teaching kids to solve real-world problems. I've seen that happening. I'm very proud of this achievement in our system, and I would look forward to the great success of the STEAM week coming up, and I want to hear more about that. So thank you so much for coming to the board and presenting the update. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll be back.
Our next order of business is delegations. There are no delegations tonight. We now move on to our next item, which is consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Could we have the agenda, consent agenda, please? So we have agreed to remove item six point one, point two, point two, six point one, point two, point three, and six point two, point four at the approval of the agenda. So we have a couple of action items here, the policies, and we will take us, there'll be a single motion to approve the action items, which is the policies. There will be no discussion there, and there will be no discussion on the noted items as well. I will now read the motion. Resolve that the Holden Catholic I will now read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items 6.1.1 minus 6.1.2.2, 6.1.2.3, and item 6.1.2, less 6.2.4 on Tuesday, January 16, 2024, as submitted. May I have a mover? Looking for a mover. Trustee Saunders moves. Looking for second trustee Carabella. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We shall skip over item number seven and item number eight and move on to item number nine, action items. Before we, we have a couple of action items here, and before we dive into action items, I will once again review the rules for everyone's benefit. We will start off with question period. Our trustees will have three minutes to ask questions. No debates during this time, no amendments, and then we have three minutes for debate. The first item is multi-year strategic plan, and at this point in time, since I've been the chair of the multi-year strategic plan committee and I'm bringing this to the board, I would like to hand the gavel over to Vice Chair Agnew, who will lead us. Vice Chair Agnew.
Okay, so before we table this motion, I will call upon Director Klein to introduce our multi-year strategic plan consultant, Mr. Fulen from Maximum City, to speak to the process that was followed to arrive at the recommendations. Director Klein will then speak to the implementation and rollout of the plan at the HCSB once approved by the board. And then I will move over to the chair, who will read the motion and open the discussion. So over to you, Director Klein.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for that. We have come to the the end of what has been a long journey, but not one that was was arduous or one that we look back on with negative thoughts at all, as sometimes is the case with long journeys. In fact, it was nearly a year ago that we retained Maximum City after going through a strict vetting process that involved trustees. And we embarked on what is possibly the most important, one of the most important things that trustees in a Catholic school board do, and that is to look at what the signs of the times are, to retain the best and the brightest, and to look at what staff has to offer, and to try and set a vision for the next three, four plus years. You are aware that the multi-year strategic plan or strategic plan that preceded this was one that began back in 2017, 18, long before COVID, long before other changes at Halton Catholic District School Board in this province. And so we look forward to the future with great anticipation, with great hope and joy and love, as all Christians do, for what lies before us. I will ask Josh Fulen and Priya, who have worked with us over the last few months, to give us a sense of the process and where we are at now. The trustees have in front of them a fairly succinct report, and it was not that long ago that we gathered together as a as a committee, all of us, to to look at where we've ended up after all this work. I would like to, on behalf of all of us, thank Josh and Priya for the work that they've done. School boards, like all communities, work best when we have critical friends to help guide us, to help support us and to help give us a sense of what else is going on in the province of Ontario and beyond. So for that, we're very, very grateful. I'll turn it over to Josh now to give us a bit of a sense of of the process that we've been through. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, and good evening. We were not the decision makers for this process, for the development of the multi-year strategic plan, but we were the stewards of the process. And as Director Klein described, I'd like to speak for a moment to the process that we follow because it's important. It's an important plan. And the process that creates the plan is important. Good things are created in good processes. Bad things are created in poor processes. So I'll speak to the process for a moment. It began, you know, several months ago, as was alluded to. And it was really our great privilege to work across those months alongside staff and trustees, trustees, and to listen to the community, to the Halton Catholic community, about their priorities, about their values, about the challenges of the next term of the MYSP, and really then undertake a sense-making exercise, which was collecting all the data that we heard in all the different forms, synthesizing it, and then turning that into recommendations. And the numbers, I think, speak to quite a defensible evidence base. So we had over 1,800 participants across all groups in the in the Halton Catholic community. We analyzed over 10,000 comments. We participated in nine steering committee and board meetings, and over a dozen working group and design meetings and ongoing project status meetings with staff. So the journey that Director Klein spoke to was really important for us. It was really important for us to take care along the journey, to go back and get things right, to listen to folks and to take all of that information, put it in the funnel, and then come forward with a strategic plan that you will see tonight. And what you see tonight is really the what of the plan. So it's the strategy itself, it's the strategic priorities or the pillars, and the strategic objectives that go with it, and the guiding principles, the we statements that you will see. And then the how of the plan is is being developed by staff in a separate stream. So the what of the plan is sort of the words and the content, the public-facing piece on the how could include the monitoring, methodology, the implementation, and the action plans, and how how staff may report back to this body on the progress of the plan. And I just, I just want to say two things in closing. One is that the plan, this plan is distinctly your plan. It is a Halton Catholics' plan. It's not some other districts. And it really picks up and leverages the strengths of the previous plan and renews the commitments that we heard were important to folks, and then builds on those and adds to those commitments and really amplifies the strengths of the previous plan. It doesn't look like any other district's plans. You know, we've, we've done this work in several districts in Ontario. This one is uniquely yours. So I think you can feel good about that, that you have a plan for Halton Catholic. It is distinctly Catholic. It focuses on the student. It focuses on achieving, on achieving, which we heard from folks was very important. And it's distinctly your plan. And then the the second idea that I want to leave you with is the idea of joint determination. So joint determination is not the same as consensus, and throughout this process, which we were the stewards of, there wasn't always consensus, which I think is a good thing. You want some productive antagonism throughout a process like this. You want some tension. So the really good ideas percolate to the top. And I think we saw that last week in the standing committee discussion and other meetings. In the many meetings we had with the working group where we went back and forth and were really intentional about every single word in the plan and what it meant and how it would land with different audiences. So the idea of joint determination is what got us to the plan. And don't, don't let that that idea of joint determination and today. It will take joint determination, not consensus, joint determination to implement the plan, to pursue the common goals, and it's really a process of unifying. So those two ideas, the plan is distinctly yours, distinctly Halton Catholics', and it will take joint determination to continue with the plan as it took joint determination to create it. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Josh. And in terms of next steps, we're going to have a couple of staff members chime in in terms of what the next few weeks will entail. And I'm going to ask Andrea Swindon now, who I think is connected connected to us, to talk a bit about the communication for one, the unfolding, marketing, branding, all that. Again, one of the great blessings of working at Halton Catholic District School Board is we have a creative and innovative and thoughtful powerhouse when it comes to communicating and ensuring that our own community and the community beyond knows what we're about, both aesthetically and in terms of the content. So I'm going to ask Andrea to give a little bit of a sense of what the next steps are with regard to communicating. Go ahead.
Thank you, Director Klein. I will, I won't share the the slides that I shared at the multi-year strategic plans steering committee. I think I can just kind of provide an overview. Once approved, we will finalize our communications plan, and it will be shared at a future board meeting. I can tell you just quickly that the goals of the communication plan, we are threefold. Number one is to share the new multi-year strategic plan with all key stakeholders using a variety of communications tools and methods. Then we would like to build understanding about the purpose and importance of the multi-year strategic plan through clear and consistent messaging. And we will ensure school administrators have the tools and resources they need to bring the MYSP to life in their school communities. We will, and this will be provided in greater detail when you see the plan in a few weeks. Some of the tactics that we will use to help communicate the new strategic plan are a dedicated website for the 2024-2028 multi-year strategic plan. We will have a promotional brochure to share digitally or in print. We will have a direct email campaign to staff, students, and families. One of the key ways that we will be communicating and sharing this information is through the trustee newsletter that we will be sending out by the end of January. We, as always, we will have a series of social media campaigns, feature stories on our board and school websites, news releases. We also are planning on posters and information for staff on on the internet site, which is StaffNet. And we're also planning a video series to promote the MYSP at various phases, the launch, the implementation, and the monitoring phases as well. The other thing I mentioned when we met last was we are developing a resource toolkit for school administrators to help them bring the MYSP to life in the school community. So that's what we're planning for the for the launch and the communication of the new multi-year strategic plan. And there will be more information in the coming weeks. Director Klein, I'm not sure if at this point you'd like me to share the image, or if you want me to wait. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
You didn't hear it because I got caught in my, in my. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to begin now to talk a bit about that. Afterward, I am going to talk about the process. You already said that in the next few weeks, I think when we met last week as a committee, we talked about in March, we would be coming back with more details in terms of the goals and objectives and the indicators and timelines, et cetera, that we've already begun to work on. But I think this is timely because I think the work that you've been doing in your department that you're leading speaks to some very important developments and thoughts about what the trustees have come up with.
Sure. So thank you. I'm going to share my screen for a second. In your report, you have the the digital designs that 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 were taken to the multi-year strategic planning committee last week. This is what's embedded in your report, and this is essentially what you what you agreed to move forward to the board today. So for all intents and purposes, and inside your package, if you have a look, and I know all of you have already read the rationale, there's a very good rationale that was developed by our creative design officer, Rob DeFranco, explaining why this image, why the icons, the the use of color. I won't, I won't get into that right now because it is in the report. I just wanted to mention, so this is essentially what the what the visual will look like 99% of the time when anybody is looking at information about our multi-year strategic plan. Our poster will look like this, we'll have the image, and then what's what's great about this this particular image is that encompasses everything. It also encompasses the strategic priorities and the guiding principles and the objectives. So we're all on one page. We have everything. Now, at the last meeting, and I know Josh will recall, we had a couple, a little bit of a discussion and a recommendation to to move some of these icons to, and specifically to change, to swap believing and achieving. So what we did is we went back, I went back to Rob, because this is something that we had talked about as a team. One of the things that was nagging at me, to be honest with you, I love the image and I love how it, it, you know, I love the design, I really do. But when you look at it in its entirety right now with the objectives, there's really no flow to our tagline is achieving, believing, belonging, and then we wanted to add the becoming. Right now, when you read this, you're you're seeing believing, achieving, becoming, belonging. And so there was no flow, but there was really no way to to with this particular design to create the achieving, believing, belonging, becoming because of the colors and the way they lend themselves. And I won't get into technical. Rob would describe it much better than I could. But if you if you've got two secondary colors opposing each other and transitioning into each other, you're going to get murky brown color in the middle, which would is not what we wanted. We wanted this transition from the yellow to the orange and from the blue to the green to show that there are distinct paths that, you know, mesh and 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 work with each other. So that we wouldn't have been able to achieve. That said, Rob went back to the drawing table, and it is something we talked about. He had never created a design, but he created the design for having the believing at the top and the achieving, so swapping the look of the two positions. And I will show you, that's not the one I want to show you. It is. Sorry about that. That's the murky one. Okay, what happened to it? Okay, hang on, give me two seconds. I think I swapped it. I may have to stop sharing and share again because I can't find it here. Somehow in all of that, I closed it out. Okay, so here is the revised version. And I just want to show you so that everybody can have a look if it was suggested. And I think you can speak about something and wonder what it might look like. And then once you see the actual design, I think it helps quite a bit to see it. So this is what it would look like. And I think you can see my screen. Let me know if you can't. This is what it would look like to swap them up. So one of the things that I like, I have to say, I was pleasantly surprised by this. I didn't know how it would work. But one of the things I do like, I do personally, and again, I leave it up to the discretion of the board of trustees, but this, one of the things I like is that now you have a bit more flow. So we have, we read left to right. So now you would see achieving, believing, belonging, becoming. I also think the, and Josh, I know this is the first time you're seeing it, I apologize. It's been, this was literally all just happening today. But I feel that it strengthens the the look of the cross as well. I mean, I always saw a cross. I know some people saw double infinity symbols. I see the cross, and I feel like it strengthens the look of the cross. I like the blue on the top. I think it's just stronger. So I mean, it took us having to, let's have a look at it so we can see if it works. And for me, and Priya, you're welcome to. I don't know what you think because we didn't look at this. We talked about it, but he didn't actually go and test it out. But I think it works. And what I love about it is because this is going to be the image that we share almost always in the poster. It really does follow the flow of our tagline, achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming. So happy to to hear any feedback about this. I don't know if this is the time, Director Klein, or if.
First of all, thank you for that. You know what, the dramatic pause, I think, is what got us here. There's just that waiting, is she going to find it? Is she going to lose it? And so we were very much appreciative of it. I would point out, too, that this is, that creativity really never ends amongst us and within this group. And this, partly, I'm looking without my glasses at Trustee Carabella, because I think this is also part of some conversations that we had regarding how symbols convey messages. And I think we went through a few in terms of the content and maybe even the aesthetics of it. And it worked, maybe the spirit is at work here. And so I, for one, am impressed at this. I'm not worried or ashamed that we've kind of done this at the last minute. I think it's just a good reflection of that. I saw at one point, sorry, Chair, we had, one of the trustees has his hand up. I'm not sure. Can we wait for that? Okay. So I don't, I think time possibly is, we can move on if there's questions. Those questions can come later. Does that sound fair? Okay.
Thank you very much, Director Klein. Thank you, Andrea, for that, and Josh, for going through. So I'm going to now ask Trustee Doherty if you will please read this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have the motion on the screen, please? Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendations of the Multiyear Strategic Planning Steering Committee to approve the strategic priorities and desired outcomes as outlined in Appendix B.
Trustee Doherty moves this motion. This item has come to the board from the Multiyear Strategic Plan Committee, and as such, we only need a mover. Trustee Doherty, you have five minutes to speak to this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have time myself. Madam Chair, thank you for giving the opportunity. It's my privilege and utmost pleasure as Chair of the Multiyear Strategic Planning Committee to bring forth the committee recommendations to this board of trustees for approval. Under the Education Act, Section 169.1, subsection 1G, every board should develop a multi-year strategic plan at achieving the goals to promote student achievement and well-being. That is to promote a positive school climate and promote the prevention of bullying and deliver effective and appropriate education programs to its people. Emphasis on education programs. Under subsection 2, this plan shall be for a period of three years or more. This MYSP is thus the most important, one of the most important functions of this board of trustees, which encompasses everything we should be doing for our students and our staff. This MYSP process started in April 2020, but it took a pause due to COVID-19. The detailed timelines of this process are in your package. The process restarted in early 2023, and we have had 10 formal committee meetings and a multitude of meetings behind the scenes to come up with this plan. Mr. Fulan and Director Klein have provided lots of detailed information on this process followed and the implementation steps. Once approved, and we will have a lot more, I'm sure we will have a lot more work to do. I must say, Madam Chair, that I'm extremely proud of the collaboration that happened behind the scenes of this plan, to produce this plan. This plan is the voice of our students, our student groups, elementary as well as secondary, parents, caregivers, teachers, staff, various board committees, administrators, community groups, community members, clergy, and trustees. I will emphasize that this plan is not the voice of individual groups, but it's a collective voice of all. Madam Chair, I will now, I will report to this board that we have stayed focused and have had some great discussions at committee meeting. And everyone present was encouraged to express their thoughts and suggestions, which were given due consideration. I will confidently say that every word in this high-level plan has been thoroughly discussed and agreed upon. Much attention has been paid to, including all aspects of excellence in education, creating an inclusive and welcoming environment, perfect alignment with the tenets of our Catholic faith, our values, and our values and guidelines on renewing the promises and achieving excellence in Ontario Catholic schools, which is a nice document. We are distinctly Catholic, distinctly Catholic school board, and our pillars of believing is ingrained in all aspects of this plan. Madam Chair, I want to thank our consultants and our staff for supporting us in this endeavor. And I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to serve as the Chair of the Multiyear Strategic Planning Committee. And our present are pillars of achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming for questions and debate. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Doherty, you came in under time as well. So just a reminder now, we are going to open up question, question time, and trustees do have three minutes for their questions. So we will go through that first, and then we will get into our debate time. So trustees, please put your hands up if you're looking to ask clarifying questions. I'm starting to get a list, so let's go ahead. Trustee Saunders, you're up first.
Thank you, Board Chair. Just for clarity, are we approving this with the new logo? The new design, is that incorporated in this?
Chair Doherty, do you want to answer that question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, the suggestion which, given by Ms. Swindon, Ms. Swindon, we'd like to put it up again for trustees' benefit. That's the one which is being suggested. I believe you have done a research into how it could be implemented color-wise across our system, using our existing, using across our system, letterheads, board, you know, business cards and everywhere. So this is the one, Trustee Saunders.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's bold, and it really shows us how proud we're of our faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Trustee Powell?
I just wondered, may I ask through you, Madam Chair, could we see the two side by side? Are they okay?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not. Ms. Swindon, are you able to put them both side by side?
I am, I can try. And hopefully you don't lose the impact. Let me stop sharing for a second.
Take your time.
Sorry, just using that strategy of trying to build suspense again, as it seemed to work last time. So this is probably as good as I can get it. Unfortunately, one of them is in an image file, and the other one is in a PDF. So it's, hopefully you can see, hang on a second. Let me put this one on top, and then you can get a better idea. Trustee Powell, can you see that? Does that help a little bit?
I can't see anything right now.
Oh, I'm not sharing, huh? I'm still begging suspense. There we go. How's that?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
So this one is the original, the one on your, the smaller, one that's looking smaller to you right now. The one with believing in the corner is the original, and this is what I would like to propose. But again, it's up to, it's up to the board of trustees.
Trustee Powell, did you have questions about it at all? You just wanted to see it? Okay, great, thank you very much, thank you. Trustee Carabella, you're up next.
Thank you. This is questions, I just wanted to make a comment. My question, I don't have a question, I just want to comment about this design. So, yeah, I really like it. I know when I brought the question last week, I thought it was important to be able to see it. And I really like the tagline and the crosses on top and bold. I'm also intrigued by the direction of the butterfly. The flight is almost like more forward, like with this behind you, with the cross, your academic achievement, you're achieving, your community behind you, and you take flight. I did, since last board meeting, I was trying to remember a verse from the Bible where, from scripture, that speaks to me with this image. And it's John 12:32, it says, "And I, when I am lifted up from the earth, will draw all to myself." And that's what I was, had in my mind with having the cross on top. And I think it reflects our goals very much for our board. Thank you. Thank you for providing us with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Is there any other questions before we move over to debate? Okay, so we are now, the question period is now closed. We are now moving over to debate. Do trustees have anything? Trustee Carabella, do you mind just putting your hand down for one second, unless you're putting it back up again? Just so I don't get confused, thank you. We're now, if there is anyone that would like to put their hand up to debate anything with respect to this motion, now is the time to do so. All right, seeing no hands, let's go ahead and call the vote.
I'm sure I got it close.
You didn't let me finish, Trustee Doherty. So excited over there. I'm taking my moment here, so just give me a second, and I will go over to you. There may be some other things I'd like to say. I'll think about it for a second. So as I was saying, we have now closed debate. I will put this back over to Trustee Doherty, who now has three minutes to close the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very excited, I am very excited. I can see that happening. So, Madam Chair, thank you for, trustees, for your support all throughout this process. Been a long and lengthy process. We had had great, we had had great discussion. I will simply repeat myself once again by saying that this MYSP is one of our most important functions as a trustee. And this comprehensive MYSP, the page that you see out there, this plan does just that. This plan is, again, the voice of everyone we have spoken to. And we cannot ignore this, and we have done a good job at this. So, Madam Chair, likewise, I'm hoping that each of us who have participated on the committee are extremely proud. Each one should be proud of ourselves for the work that we have done. And each one of us, for the next few years that this plan is in place, will be a beacon of light for our Catholic school systems. And this is going to be our legacy at HCDSP. I look forward to your support on our most important function, that's the MYSP in front of us. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Trustee Doherty. We will now call the vote. So I'm going to go to recorded vote for this. So let's just go around. So again, you have the motion here in front of you. We have discussed and debated. So I will now call the vote, like I said. So Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chanata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Doherty?
In favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
And I, myself, are in favor. The motion passes, thank you, everybody. So it is now the responsibility of the Director of Education to operationalize this approved multi-year strategic plan at the Halton Catholic District School Board. We look forward to its successful implementation across our system, and we will await annual progress reports to the board of trustees. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support, thank you. Okay, now that's done. We shall now move on to our action item 9.2, change of date, April PA Day. This item was a staff report at December 19th board meeting, and it's now an action item. Superintendent DiNolfo, please speak to the item, and then I will read the motion. Superintendent DiNolfo.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to bring to the attention of the trustees that there is a solar eclipse, which will be happening during the afternoon of Monday, April 8, 2024. The timing of this event is particularly important as the eclipse will begin at approximately 2 o'clock and end around 4:30 PM during the dismissal time of our students. The background information is in conversation with the Halton District School Board and Halton Student Transportation. We're looking to make a joint decision to move our professional development day scheduled for Monday, April 22, to Monday, April 8, 2024. This will allow students to be home safely during the eclipse and not en route home from school. The information about the eclipse can be found on the Government of Canada web state. This is how it was brought to our attention. So all the information about the risk associated with the eclipse is there for trustees to review. We asked the board trustees for this change of the PA Day in order to expedite the communication to our families to give them due time to make a change with their arrangements for the PA Day.
Thank you, Superintendent DiNolfo. I shall now read the motion and place it on the floor. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the change of date for the April PA Day from Monday, April 22, 2024, to Monday, April 8, 2024. May I have a mover, please? Looking for a mover? Trustee O'Hern Chanata? Trustee Powell seconds it. I shall now open up question time. Trustees, do we have questions? Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent DiNolfo. During the calendar meeting, there was a discussion about what this day would look like for the teachers who are having their professional development that day, and there was some discussion about them also being able to be at home during that time. And so I'm curious what that looks like for the teachers on that day, and if there was a decision made on that.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent DiNolfo?
Through you, Chair, and Trustee Murphy, thanks for the question. We haven't finalized the plan for the PD Day for April 8. We are working with our planning committee, and that will be solidified within the next few weeks. And so I can bring that back to you with what the plan is.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up. So I guess my question is then through you, Mr. Chair, is this particular professional development happening on the day conducive to moving it online? I've just, I'm just, I personally don't, I won't even get into my personal opinion, but I'm just wondering, is it conducive to teachers working from home? Or what does that look like?
Superintendent DiNolfo?
Through you, Chair, Trustee Murphy, it's a provincial priority day, so there are topics that some could be done virtually. We know how to do that. However, we could, we're still working through with their planning committee what that day will look like. So I wanted to let them have voice to the delivery of that day.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
One more follow-up?
Sure.
Will there be another meeting around that for the committee between now and when that decision is made?
Superintendent Denalfo?
So Trustee Murphy, this is the decision to move forward, and I can bring back the information of what the plan is. And that's what the requirement for the ministry is to communicate to the ministry and to parents if the PD for the staff will be virtual or in person at the school.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Carabella, you have three minutes. You're the floor.
Okay, I just had a question, and it just left as quickly as it came. Oh, wow. Wow, I really lost it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll have another opportunity. Trustees, okay, I have no other trustees here, so that's the end of question period. So I shall now open up debate time, three minutes. Trustees, you can ask your questions, so you can, you can, you can debate right now, so go ahead. Any trustees, trustees, uh, trusty Murphy? Trustee Carabella? Yeah, go ahead.
The question was whether this, are we the first one to approve this, or is Halton District School Board has approved this already? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. From my understanding, Halton District has approved that, but Superintendent Denalfo?
Through you, Chair. Yes, Halton District approved it last week at their board meeting.
Thank you. I see no other hands up, so trustees, I shall now call the vote on item that you see on your screen, the motion. Can we put the motion up there? The motion is up on the screen. It was moved by Trustee O'Hern Chanata, seconded by Trustee Powell. Trustee O'Hern Chanata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. We shall now move on to action item 9.3, request for response from the Ministry to non-compliance 2022-23 budget. This item was a notice of motion at a December 19th board meeting, brought forward by Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, could you please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Board of Trustees received an action report at the November 21, 2023 regular board meeting as item 10.1, 2022-2023 draft audited consolidated financial statements. Whereas within the report, it stated the $5 million in-year deficit for compliance purpose is above the allowable 1% of operating revenue threshold at 1.4 million. The HCDSB has discussed the non-compliance with the ministry, and the ministry requires no further approvals. Whereas at the board meeting, it was acknowledged that an email was received from the ministry pertaining to the non-compliance. Be it resolved that the Director of Education direct to staff to provide all emails and/or written correspondence from the ministry pertaining to the non-compliance of the 2022-2023 budget to all the trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board by January 31, 2024.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. This item was moved by Trustee Carabella. Looking for a second, please? Seconded by Trustee Saunders. This motion is in order, and I will place it on the table. Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the rationale stated, states that at the November 21, 2023 meeting, we discussed the budget of 2022-2023, the financials, statements. So, and our board became aware in October 2023 that our budget was non-compliant. The ministry was advised, and then we, then the next steps were weighted. Those next steps were received, and information was brought to the board meeting for trustees. The motion I'm putting on the table is to forward the email and the correspondence pertaining to the non-compliance of our budget to all the trustees. As trustees, one of our important jobs is the budget and governance. I did request these email, these emails, over email since December 4 with no definitive answer as of December 18. So I decided to make it a board motion at the December 19 meeting. I don't want to take up board time for this. I hope we can come to a quick vote that indeed we should be sent these emails. To me, it didn't seem like a complex request to do this. Our board has never been in non-compliance, and it is in the spirit of governance, a spirit of budget oversight, and a spirit of good communication that I'm requesting that we see this, these important emails. I'm not requesting them to be made public, but to be forwarded to the trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I shall now open up question time. First up, I see Trustee Saunders. You have three minutes for questions.
Yeah, I just have to say to Trustee Carabella, I support this, because it's, it's consistent with 169.
Trustee Carabella, question time. Sorry, Trustee Saunders, question time. Debate will come in later. Sorry. Okay, any other questions? Trustee O'Hern Chanata, question or debate?
No, debate.
Debate time. Okay, seeing no other hands up for questions, we shall open up debate, and Trustee Saunders, you are first.
Thank you very much, Board Chair. Through you, Board Chair, I, I support this because it's consistent with Section 169.1 of the Education Act and Module 13 of our Oxta Good Governments for School Boards. Seems a rather benign request, because this, these documents have to exist, or I'm assuming the ministry would have come in by now and shut the board down. So it, it just seems to be, you know, the fact that it hasn't been provided to date is a bit of a mystery. And I think it's, it's not really that big a deal, so it'd be good to see this information, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Up, up next is Trustee, Trustee O'Hern Chanata.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the word governance has been spoken about a few times already this evening, so, so maybe the meanings of governance differ. But governance can be defined as a system by the system by which entities are directed and controlled. It is concerned with structure and processes for decision-making, accountability, control and behavior at the top of an entity. Why I'm reading this is because we have an audit committee. The audit committee was formed as a process of control to support good governance. So we have controls in place that are already sustaining good governance. And to be quite honest, I don't think we need an email when the audit committee, who is formed of, I think, fairly intelligent people and very experienced people, have passed this without asking for an email. So based upon that, I will never support that, because this is good governance. We have the systems in control. Not have an email does not contain good governance.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Chanata. Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So while being a member of the audit committee as well, I would say the audit committee's job is not to, you know, go through every line item and about exactly how money was spent. It was, it's just to clarify that if you mentioned a category you spent on, they do audit some of those categories and make sure that you, you know, you're spending money on textbooks, that you spent money on textbooks. This is completely different. We have a duty of trustees for governance, for, to vote on a budget. It's $460 million. And we didn't meet the obligation of being, having a balanced budget. Not only that, it wasn't even compliant. So as a trustee, I like to know what the ministry said about, about the board's budget, because this hasn't happened before. And I don't see why, if it's a one paragraph email that I've been told that the trustees, that, that our staff has received, why that can't be shared with trustees? Why is that being held back? That gives me more questions than answers. I don't understand why a paragraph email, but what the ministry said, cannot be shared with all of us. There's nothing wrong with asking for that information. This is the biggest part of our job, is to balance this, is to, is to vote on this budget. And I like to see that information presented to trustees. You know, we had the York Catholic Board that just voted back in September to do an, to do an audit through the ministry on their finances, because the chair there was not satisfied with the budget. So all I'm saying is, you know, we can, we can, we can do this, and we can get this information. It's already available. It's a simple email. Didn't have to come to the board. Thank you.
Trustee Kennedy, we are having a debate about a motion here. I don't think it's appropriate to compare our board with another board. Okay, I think we should focus on our business practices itself. So anyway, your point is well received, and I want to thank you for that. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew. You're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. There keeps going around this inference, I don't need my camera. This inference that trustees who may be in a position to not support this are in fact not providing good governance or not doing their job. So I, I do take a little bit of exception to that. I do think that, I do believe that we do a very good job, all of us, with respect to governance. This is, these are financial statements. This is not the budget. As Trustee O'Hern Chanata commented, there is the role of the audit committee. And frankly, I, I do trust staff. I, I trust staff to submit what they need to submit. I do not need to see an email. I don't think I'm being misled. I don't think I'm being lied to. I believe when staff tells me that this is the information that has been requested, this is the information that's been provided, and that has in fact happened. And I don't see the need to have to have emails sent to me to prove what they are saying. And so again, just a comment about this continuous mentioning of governance and this again is inference that those trustees who do not support this are not providing good governance. And I do take exception to that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. So all trustees who have hands up have, have had three minutes for debate. I'm not getting into debate, but I have a comment, okay, and I'm going to be very brief. So we have an audit committee made up of two very qualified industry experts, as well as Trustee O'Hern Chanata, Trustee Saunders, and Trustee Kennedy. You'll sit on this committee, and you'll have made a decision in this committee to accept this, this report and bring it to the board. So the very fact that you have accepted this, I trust that you have made a good decision at that point in time as a trustee. That's sufficient for me. That's, that's due diligence on my part. Number one. Number two is that budgets are my role and responsibility, responsibility for sure. I have absolute trust in my staff. My staff, our staff is, they have a lot of experience at this. They're financial, financial professionals. They have their designations here. They are responsible to our Ministry of Education directly. They are putting their designations on the line. And I'm extremely confident in the, in the abilities of our board. We are a good board. We have had good reputations in the past. And I have extreme confidence in their roles. By the way, they have also brought in a balanced budget now. So are we going to ask email responses for everything that's going on behind the scenes? I'm not comfortable with that. Thank you to our staff for doing a great job. And with that, I shall call the vote on this item, on this motion, which is 9.3, was moved by Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Saunders.
I close, Mr. Chair?
Sorry, Trustee Carabella, you get to close. One second. Give me a second. Yes, Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, I brought this forward, because as trustees, we, we all have a role to do. And we all do it in different ways. We bring different talents, different questions. We bring a different skill set. And we can respect each other requesting different information. What one person thinks is important, another one is, is okay with it. So I think we can respect each other and ask for things. I would, I asked for this email, and again, in a spirit of communication, in a spirit of open communication, that there's no barriers to getting requests that deal with the budget, something new that we've never had before. And to me, it makes sense. Again, I, again, if it's just the paragraph, it makes sense to see. So I would request that you vote in favor, and we'll just have that email. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. With that, I shall call the vote on the motion. In front of us, it was moved by Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Saunders. Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Deepu?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Powell?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
A vote on transparency, not ability, in favor.
Are you in favor or are you opposed?
In favor. In favor.
Thank you. And Trustee O'Hern Chanata?
I'm opposed.
You're welcome.
Trustee, Trustee Kennedy, I'm in the middle of the vote. I will not have any disturbance. Trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor. We have five opposed. Motion fails. And note to trustees, I'm getting some disturbance here during a vote. I would like absolute silence during the vote. Once the vote is called for, I would expect all to respect the integrity of the process. Thank you. We now move on to action item, sorry, action item 9.6, 6.1.2.3, Policy II-41, School Uniform Dress Code, School Dress Codes. Trustee O'Hern Chanata, could you please read the motion?
Thank you. Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy II-41, School Uniform Dress Code, School Dress Codes be approved.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Chanata. This policy was pulled out by, I think, Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, did you pull this policy out? Just to clarify, Trustee Kennedy? Okay. Yes, so are we, I'm not sure the reason why I pulled it out. I'm just wondering if I should go into question time and debate time.
I don't have any questions or comments. The, the reason I pulled it out is because while not voting on it during the last meeting, I can't in good conscience lead it to the consent agenda and vote in favor of all the other items. I do consent to the consent agenda, so just need to pull it out and to vote opposed and move onwards.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so trustees, do we have further questions on this policy? Seeing none, I shall take this to a recorded vote. We are voting on item 9.6, Policy II-41, School Uniform Dress, Dress Code. It was pulled out of the consent agenda. It's coming from policy, so we do not have a, a second. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Abstain.
Trustee Chua is not present. Trustee Chua, are you there? Trustee McGuire? Trustee Deepu? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Sorry. Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chanata?
In favor.
Trustee Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
We have six in favor, one opposed, one abstention. Motion carries. The policy passes. We shall now move on to did I miss anything? Oh, I missed 9.5. We have 9.5, Policy II-12, Management of Student Behaviors Posing Imminent Physical Risk. Trustee, this item has come to us from Policy. Trustee O'Hern Chanata, could you please read that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy II-12, Management of Student Behaviors Posing Imminent Risk, be approved.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Chanata. This item was pulled out by Trustee Carabella. Is it correct? Trustee Carabella, you have question on debate, or we take it to a vote? Thank you. We are taking it to a vote. Trustees, do we have any other questions on this while we are here? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on, on item 9.5. This item has come to us from Policy, does not need a second. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Abstain.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee O'Hern Chanata?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
We have five in favor, three abstain. Motion carries. This policy passes. We shall now move on down to our business staff reports. We have no staff reports tonight. We shall now move on to item number 11, Information Report, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. Now we'll to goodness that works, and it does. Every time I do this, I thank goodness that it works, actually. So I'm going to begin the director's report, and I'm going to final, as I leave, I'm going to add a few comments that aren't in the report. First of all, I've, in a tongue-in-cheek mode, I never thought I would have a director's report, and maybe I'm the first in Ontario where I would have holy bears in it. So we are going to have a director's report that has holy bears in it, which is not a blasphemy, I guess, to yell that. Fairly straightforward. I know the director's reports are fairly short and sweet and, and, and frequent. But for trustees, just to acknowledge that this will address school athletics, the PA Day that's coming up, online e-learning PD, holy bears, of course, and some of the noteworthy days that come up as well. School athletics continue to move on. I think we do take for granted that we are post-COVID, and that life is returned fairly normal in terms of schools. And parents, again, and students look forward to this opportunity. And parents again, and students look forward to this opportunity for them, in some cases, to be part of what is maybe the first formal kind of team they've been part of in their, in their lives. Then secondary panel, we have hockey for boys and girls. It's ongoing. And basketball for the boys, volleyball for the girls, and that flips through the season. Elementary, basketball, boys and girls, again, playoffs will be later in the month that follows. Hockey is co-ed in elementary. They're just practicing now and then there'll be a, a tournament lined up for the month of March. Just to review back in the fall, many of you had attended cross-country. There's a lot of tweeting, a lot of celebration that's been going on for a few years. We had nearly thirty-two hundred students participate in cross-country. That included ninety-six, so just under a hundred special Olympians. The number overall is a record for this board. So in terms of the numbers we have had. Thanks go out to a myriad of staff, in some cases volunteers, parents who help out with this, without whom none of this would be possible. And again, school is much more than reading and writing and arithmetic. For many students, this is one of the big highlights of their school experience. January PA day is coming up. January PA day is next Monday and that is restricted in this case for elementary. And we have one following about ten days later for secondary. The dedicate, the, the prime reason for this is the report card writing time for our classroom teachers. People are always interested in the work that we do to support our staff and the work that they do as educators. This superintendent Toldsorto shared with us that we have, as always, e-learning and online learning and that the PD for those staff is a little tailored again, as it would be expected. It's a webinar format for teachers. PD is happening all the time. Not just informal PD that teachers and other educators do on their own, but what we do to support them at the board is very important. Education is modern, it's fast-paced and people have to be continually improving. The webinar format is the way we've done it and throughout this month and into February, there are an assortment of webinars provided for our staff who are teaching online. And they focus on pedagogical skills that center on, it's called the VLE, virtual learning environment. And the focus generally is on communication skills or communicating through that, that medium. Assessment, which by necessity has to be differentiated and tailored in that environment where you're not physically near students. And then of course, engagement is a different beast altogether when it comes to online learning as well. And here we are, holy bearers. So we had our system chaplain and faith formation lead, Gillian Federico, speak that to us, that sadly, in response to a tragedy at one of our schools, she had been looking for something that had come up at a, a Catholic educational conference she had seen a few years ago, where a company called, yes, Holy Bears from Texas, had created these pretty adorable and connected to our faith bears to help provide some solace and some hope to families in needs, in need. And we've already, I guess it's good news, but it's sad because it's a response to tragedy. We've already utilized these guys for these events. And the company was very generous in terms of price and giving away a lot of freebies as well. Holden Catholic District School Board is not a corporation that exists on its own. We're connected to the community here, provincially, nationally and internationally. And by no means is this to restrict all the days that are important throughout the, the calendar year. But for January and for February, these are days that are highlighted. Of course, we have fairly important ones like elementary PA days, where people need to know that. But we know ones that speak to our commitment to mental health, like Bells Let's Talk Day. We look certainly as we head into February, Black History Awareness Month, which is extremely important for us. And we head into the forty-day season of Lent, which begins not as early as it could, but fairly early in, in this case, February, the, the fourteenth, which kind of ruins Valentine's Day, I guess, but that's another matter altogether. So those are the days. We have some questions at the end, but I do want to say something before we go. And it's in relation to a conversation we had a little earlier. I, I want to say that as Director of Education, I am so proud and so honored every day to lead a team that I think is the best in the province. And to be able to work with these men and women day in and day out and to see a commitment that they have made in many cases, many years ago, and in some cases, not that long ago relative to me, to not only Catholic education, but to creating a, a school board here at Holden Catholic District that is second to none. And to creating a society where those who are marginalized are included. A society where we look to ensure that there's justice and that we are continually reflecting and trying to, to become better than we are. So to be totally honest, it was, it was a little hurtful than we heard earlier that I think staff would take it as a sign of, of distrust, a sign of disrespect, that perhaps that they weren't necessarily thought to be doing all they could do. And I want to say as the CEO of the board is the one that you've hired to ensure that we are doing the work we do. I have no doubt whatsoever that we're doing extremely well. The staff works diligently and works very hard to ensure that we are meeting all the requirements. I am in contact with the Ministry of Education on a fairly regular schedule. And I have never received from them anything that says in, in, in education terms, you know, finger wagging or this isn't up to par, or this is wrong, or anything beyond that. And so I can assure you that from what I know from the Ministry of Education, which again is in charge of all schools and all boards in the province of Ontario, I haven't heard anything from them. And I'm sure they would let me know. Trust me. They let me know when we're late on things. They let me know when anything is something. And they certainly are quick to say, we have a report that we want to do in two days and we do our work. And we understand that the ministry itself is made up of, of people who are working hard day in and day out as well. So I just want to say that. I think it is important that all of us understand that here and not certainly is the, the team that I lead here as well. And I would say to my honorable friend here, the, the chair, and I know he would be very clear with me on this. I don't think that he has heard from the ministry as well. So if the ministry isn't getting stuff from any of the people who work here and they aren't getting it from the Director of Education, I don't think they'd be shy in terms of communicating with the chair or vice chair about that as well. And I really don't think there'd be any doubt that the chair or vice chair would connect with me right away on any of those. So I, I do want to say that I'm so proud of the work we've done tonight. I would say that was, I take it as, as, as a, a passion for ensuring that we're doing the best job possible. I think that's what I take the events of about ten minutes ago. And I must want to ensure you that we are doing the best that we can here. And I think the best that we can is second to none in this province. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. I shall now open up the floor to questions. Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
My hand was up from before.
Sorry. Okay, it's okay. Trustee Sanders, you're the floor.
Sorry, just if I can to the, to the director. So director trust is earned. And I think if you, we want to put this to bed, then I think it would be.
Trustee Sanders, you will address a question to the chair.
To the chair, sorry, chair. But trust is earned. And I think if you want to sort of establish and to create trust, I think it would be pretty simple to produce what we're asking.
Thank you, trustee Sanders, your question.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I hope you can produce it. That's my question.
Thank you, trustee Sanders. Your question has been received. I shall now move on down to trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. So I believe I heard Director Klein said we haven't received anything from the ministry or heard anything from the ministry, but we received other reports that.
Okay. I, I believe, Mr. Chair, that these questions are specific to the director's report. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Trustee Kennedy?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
The point, let me, trustee Sanders, trustee Sanders.
Point of order.
Trustee Sanders, there is one point of order. I will rule on that. Trustee Vice Chair Agnew had a point of order which I have to rule on.
Okay, please.
And her point of order was that the question should pertain to the director's report. So Director, Director Klein has presented his report. He has made a statement about trust. Okay. So I would rule that trustees can ask questions based on that. Vice Chair Agnew, so your point of order is not well received.
Just for clarification, they can ask questions about the director's statement with respect to trust, not about the director's report?
It's on the director's report, Vice Chair.
Not those last comments, but the ministry.
The comment should pertain to the report presented. Thank you. So trustee Sanders, you have a point of order.
That was my point. Thank you.
So you withdraw your point of order. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, you will proceed.
Yes. So my question, just through you, Mr. Chair, Director Klein, was that I believe I heard saying that there was nothing produced from the ministry, but we've received, we've received feedback from other superintendent lots that we did receive feedback about the non-compliant budget, that it was roughly a paragraph. So we, we've heard that we have received something and then I hear in the director's report that we have received nothing. So is the director not aware of what we, what we've received back from the ministry?
Correct you, trustee, trustee Kennedy. First of all, your questions will always be addressed to the chair, number one. Number two, Director Klein has not stated in his report anything specific to the budget or your question that you have stated. So your question is, I would say, not pertaining to the report and, and what Director Klein said.
The comments after the report, the comments after the report state that we didn't receive everything back from the ministry. So it continued on to bring up the topic from before. So I think it's fair game to ask a question if you decided to extend the report without having it written. So we heard that we didn't receive anything and we did receive something. So did we, did the director not see what we've received from the ministry?
Trustee Kennedy, do you hear me when, when you speak? When you speak, do you hear me back or it's just one-way communication? I just want to check. Trustee Kennedy, do you hear me?
So, Mr. Chair, are we allowed to ask questions on anything the director just presented, only specific things that director just presented?
First of all, do you hear me when I speak?
Yes, I hear you. So I'm asking you, are we allowed to ask questions on everything the director just mentioned? Or only very specific things that direct, that the director just mentioned? Everything or only specific things?
Okay, I get it. I don't think you can hear me when I, when you're speaking and I'm speaking. I don't think there's two-way communication.
I can, I can, no, I can hear you. I can hear you.
So when both of us are speaking, can you hear the conversation?
Yes, I can.
So that depends. You continue to speak when I'm speaking. So when the chair speaks, everybody will stop. Okay. So your questions will pertain to the director's report. The director has presented his report. He has added a few comments there to, to at the end of it. I don't believe the director has said anything specific to an item that was discussed earlier and dealt with. So kindly keep your questions related to the report. Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
So are we allowed to ask questions on the comments that were after the report as well?
So director, what are, what's your question?
That's the same question. The director continued with comments after the report. Are we allowed to ask questions regarding the comments that the, that the director said after the report?
Yes, you do, but depends what your question is. Your question was getting into some specific area that was dealt with earlier in the, in the evening. So can you repeat your question?
It seemed like, it seemed like, it seemed like it was brought up that we haven't received anything from the ministry. That's what I thought I heard. So I'm asking have, and we've been told that we have received something from the ministry, a paragraph on the non-compliant budget. So is the director aware of a report? It's just a simple, we're not getting the report because it was voted down, but is the director aware of a report that we received from the ministry? About a page, less than, less than a page regarding the non-compliant report. You said we haven't received anything. Are you aware that we have received something? Yes or no?
I'll lay the rules very straight and very clear. Director Klein has not mentioned anything about a compliant report and a report about receipt from the ministry. The statement made by Director Klein was a blanket statement covering everything and all that he's responsible for. So you have stated specifically a question about the, an item that was dealt with earlier in the evening. So I, I will not accept that. It's not in order. Okay. Do you have another question? Go ahead. Do you have another question? You can go ahead on the report. Okay. I shall move on to trustee Sanders. Trustee Sanders?
Yeah, this is, I just have a question about online learning through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. Do we still have students that are online or do we, is everybody, I think they're allowed to go to Superintendent Toldsorto. Just wondering what the status of that is.
Director Klein?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm looking over at Superintendent Toldsorto because he'll be able to give a little more specificity in terms of this, but the short answer is yes and the long answer is.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Sanders. I'm not sure if you mean by online learning what was virtual learning.
Virtual.
Yeah. For secondary school, no. The long answer.
Thank you, trustee Sanders. Any other questions? Thank you. Trustee, do we have any other further questions for Director Klein? Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. We shall now move on to information item eleven point two, Capital Projects, Capital Projects First Quarter, September twenty twenty-three, November twenty twenty-three. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Sorry. Please find attached the first quarter report for Capital. Superintendent Merrick and I are available to answer any questions relating to it.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting your report here. Trustees, you have your hands up. Trustee Sanders, trustee Kennedy. So can I put your hands down? Lower hands. Okay, thank you. Trustee Kennedy's hands is lower too. Okay, trustees, do we have any further questions for Superintendent Loft? If not, thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting your reports. Many thanks to our staff for preparing the report. We shall now move on to item eleven point three, construction reports. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we had the construction report for January. First up on your screen there is Milton number three, or the new St. Ceteri School. You can see the roof deck going on. Those pictures are a little bit dated. They're from a couple of weeks ago, but we're now getting the roof deck on the east tower as well. So it's almost fully enclosed and roofing is starting on the west section. So the gym and the cafeteria section, the actual roof membranes are going on there. We are enclosing the building now. We're trying our best to enclose the building to get some heat in there so we can dry things out a little bit and start with interior finishes. And mechanical and electrical are ongoing as they will be for, for a number of months. Up next month, we're trying to get all the remaining windows in. We have about a third of the windows left to go. And we have hopefully completing the roofing as well, once the roof deck's on. Scrolling down, we have Milton number nine next. Again, in a similar state, but a little further ahead than number three there, you can see the roof deck is all on. They're starting some interior painting. Mechanical and electrical are ongoing. Next month, finishing off the final touches on the roof, the, the cap sheet and as well flooring and interiors will start taking place into next month. And then lastly, we have Oakville number four, even further along than the previous two. You can see the curtain wall going in the library there in the top right photo. There's painting going on and even some drop ceilings going in, in the hallways. Next month, we'll have flooring, drywall and lighting and then our, some of our HVAC units will show up into March and April. So it'll be well, are fairly complete when those show up, but we can slide those in and get the ventilation running there as well. So good progress on all three and happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions? I see trustee Sanders, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to just say thank you. I, I do drive by the school in Oakville and it is coming along very well and I appreciate your hard work. The one question I have is that Ceteri, I know we had a very ambitious construction plan. How are we doing with that? Are we still on, on plan or is, is there any adjustments necessary?
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, it is a very ambitious plan. We're trying to do roughly a thirty-month build in about twenty months. So taking about a third of the schedule off. It's still within range to hit for next September. I'd say kind of our, our, our landing space is somewhere, you know, September to December, but we're, I'm trying to pull at all the stops to get us in there for September since we know the community desperately needs that school. So that's one of our tactics now is looking at ways we can expedite things. You know, I talked about we're trying to enclose the building and get tarps up so we can get a lot. Um, you know, I talked about, we're trying to enclose the building and get tarps up, um, so we can get a little bit of heat in there and dry things out. Uh, it'll create a better environment for the workers, they'll be more productive, uh, they'll want to come to the site because it's warmer than, than other sites we have going on. Um, so things like that, trying to, you know, use our funds uh, efficiently, but also uh, try and encourage uh, um, some, some expedited work on site as well, so um, we're, we're go plugging away as fast as we possibly can and, and looking for that opportunity and, and other ones as well to try and expedite things.
Thank you. Superintendent Merrick? And Superintendent Merrick, let's hope it doesn't get colder than it is now. Okay, good. Thank you, trustees, for the questions, uh, no other, no further questions. Uh, thank you, Superintendent Merrick. We shall now move on to our next order of business is miscellaneous information. Uh, student trustees update, uh, updates trustees, uh, you have in your package a report, but that report is from the last board meeting, I believe, so hopefully you have read that, but we have a new report. So the new report will be handed over to trustees, it's, it was an error. So the new report can be presented, who's presenting that report? Trustee Deepu, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, um, we apologize for the inconvenience, uh, there was a little mix-up. Uh, but uh, our report, so I will be starting off with the achieving section. Uh, so this is our first board meeting of the year, and um, our A C S B students came back to school last week. And we've continued with um, our academics this past week. High school students are especially uh, preparing for their exam season, and hopefully a success, successful finish to semester one. So we would like to wish everyone good luck in their assessments, culminating um, and exams. Additionally, our Student Leadership and Achievement Subcommittee at Student Senate um, has been making some progress with their two initiatives, uh, guidance in applying to universities in the U S, and peer tutoring in schools that don't have that program already. Uh, each home senate has begun to discuss these initiatives with their respective guidance counselors. And we're excited to see how they work to achieve the board's wish, vision and meeting the needs of all learners um, in the future. So we'll keep you updated about that. Um, and finally, for achieving, we're ex, excited to share the student trustee elections for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year have begun. And we are currently accepting applicants. Um, just a rundown on our deadlines right now, school nominees will be decided by Friday, January nineteenth, which is this Friday, I believe, um, and the elections will be held on Wednesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, um, at Saint Ignatius of Loyola Secondary School. Um, we wish good luck to all our applicants.
Thank you, Student Trissy Deepu, I will be doing the believing section. Um, so since the Christmas season has just ended with a Catholicism with the Epiphany on the sixth, we want to wish a Merry Christmas to all students, especially with those in the Eastern Rite Orthodox and Coptic Orthodox traditions who recently celebrated Christmas on January the seventh. We hope you all, all had a wonderful and enjoyable restful holiday, filled with family and fun. Um, also too, during our Advent season, our students participated in many different related activities before the winter break to strengthen their knowledge of this Catholic season. So for example, grade ten students at Saint Thomas Aquinas in Oakville made nativity sculptures to enhance both their artistic skills and their spiritual connection to the birth of Christ. And also too, to show the spirit of Christ through almsgiving, Assumption Catholic Secondary School Oakland organized a coat drive for families in need. Um, Sagittary Catholic Secondary School has also hosted a charity drive where each homeroom raised money for a charity of their choice. And we are very happy to see all this faith formation that has occurred at H C D S B during the Advent season. Um, we also too, just wanted to take this opportunity as a student trustee to thank the board for allowing us to attend the O C S T A seminar beginning this Thursday. We are very grateful for this opportunity to be able to meet with different Catholic trustees and student trustees throughout the province and to engage about, in development about what it means to be a Catholic servant leader. We hope to take a lot away from this opportunity, and thank you for all your support.
Uh, thank you, Trustee McGuire, and I will be taking over Trustee Chua's section, uh, belonging. Uh, so as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of stress as secondary school students, um, especially with our exams soon. Um, over the next few days, leading up to culminating and examination periods, our H C D S B secondary schools um, are preparing school-wide uh, wellness and exam this um, de-stress activities for students to participate in over their lunch hour. Uh, so school wellness teams are facilitating de-stress rooms where students can find a safe and accepting place to just hang out with one another, make friendship bracelets, have open conversations, and overall just to lessen the pressure of exams and grades and all of that. And we also have our secondary school C Y Cs and social workers partnering with the Saint John Ambulance to bring in therapy dogs over the lunch hour for students to pet and play with um, to help aid in exam de-stress. And finally, we encourage that staff, administrators and teachers across our board continue to lead with empathy and compassion to help prepare, propel our students for exam success, thank you.
Thank you, student trustees, trustees, do we have questions for our students? Seeing none, thank you to our student trustees once again for bringing your report and student vice once again to the table, thank you so much. Uh, we move on to miscellaneous information item twelve point two, O C S T A update, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Do you have a verbal report?
I do, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and Trustee McGuire, thank you, because, good segue. Uh, this weekend is the twenty twenty-four Catholic Trustee Sem- Seminar. Uh, looks like the uh, agenda's full, uh, very good information, a lot of great speakers. Looking forward to uh, bringing some information back after the seminar this weekend, and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara, trustees, do we have questions for Trustee Ohan Chanara? Seeing none, once again, thank you for your report, and we look forward to a great uh, workshop uh, this weekend. Some for trustees will be attending, and all the best to you guys. Uh, with that, we shall move on to uh, item number thirteen, Correspondence. Uh, I had requested that item thirteen point one be removed from the consent agenda. I would like to bring this success story to the attention of the board, it's a success story for our board. We are aware of shortfalls in funding in many areas such as transportation, sick leave, but we talk about it all the time. And we have discussed this many times, given that there's short fund, uh, shortfalls in funding and it impacts student success, our role as trustees is to put forth petitions and put forth uh, resolutions and lobby the ministry for funding through O X T A, which is our, our trustees association. Last year we submitted four resolutions and tried to engage all trustees to, to participate in that. This is very important because the resolutions report, if they are adopted by O C S T A at A G M, uh, they get moved forward. So one of the resolutions, which is in your package, Resolution nine, that's twenty-three, Funding to Support Ontario's Education Equity Plan. This had been referred, was adopted by O X T A at A G M, then got uh, referred to the Pol- Political Advisory Committee for review. And then that committee said, this is a great motion, let's take it and move it to the ministry, uh, send it to ministry for funding. So a small discussion that we had here gets taken up by O X T A, and then it moves uh, into, it's, the wheels start moving, and then we uh, we petition the ministry for funding, and that's how we should be working. So this particular motion and, and three others, we don't know the fate of that, they will probably move on. And we have done a good job because now we are uh, being, uh, this, our, our motion is being lobbied by a big group across the province. Okay, so for that, I want to thank our senior staff, who has, have been very instrumental in providing information uh, and preparing resolution, as well as at that point in time, the uh, the group of trustees who helped uh, this resolutions, Trustee Ohan Chanara and Vice Chair Agnew. I want to thank you for, for bringing these motions to, to life, and thank you to our staff. Once again, uh, I put out a request for, to trustees for new resolutions, okay? Uh, trust is always welcome, we have great support from staff for resolutions, and this is our job. So I look forward to trustees putting forward your name if you're really interested. So thank you so much uh, for your participation. With that, uh, we shall move on to our next order of business is open question period. Director Klein, do, do we have any questions submitted today?
Uh, none came to me or Elizabeth, so no.
Thank you, Director Klein, our next order of business is in, in camera, we do not have to go in camera. And we move on to our next item, which is Resolution Regarding Absentees, we have Trustee Chua, who's absent only. May I have a motion to, to excuse Trustee Chua, Trustee Carabella moves? Looking for a second there. Second by Trustee Ohan Chanara, all in favor? Anybody, anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries, Trustee Chua is excused. And we move on to a final item, which is Adjournment and Closing Prayer, may I now have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Saunders moves, looking for a second there.
Second it.
Seconded by Trustee Murphy, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Trustee Carabella, please lead us in a closing prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So now we are beginning the year twenty twenty-four, and I look to our country's patron saint, Saint Joseph. And I ask of him to bless our board with this following prayer, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Saint Joseph, whose protection is so great, so strong, so prompt before the throne of God, we place in you all our interests and desires for the spiritual blessings of all staff, student and families of Halton Catholic District School Board for the year twenty twenty-four and always. O Saint Joseph, do assist us by your powerful intercession and obtain for us and, and obtain for us from your divine son all spiritual blessings through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, and thank you all trustees for a great meeting, good night.